Okay, I think we need to start. Have we any members of the public present who wish to speak? No, thank you. Apologies for absence. We record those on Zoom as on Zoom, is that right? Is that how we do that?
So it says members of the public.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest at this point? Councillor Moore, do you?
Item three, as community board chairman.
Thank you. Okay. If anything else comes up, please make it clear at the time. Item three, councillor Willis.
Thank you, madam. My policy for the information about the be available to Buckingham Town Council in conjunction with their proposal for the community board, funding for 20 mile an hour zones to be provided for the council and any necessary actions agreed. I would like to add any correspondence from future community boards and the dates of the application to the community board to allow members to a better understanding in light of councillor Anthony Ralph's motion to see if we can bring a 20 mile an hour speed limit to Buckingham.
Thank you very much. And we've all read the town clerk's helpful paper, which refers back to the original motion by councillor Stockbury in October 2020.
Which was councillor Anthony Ralph's motion.
Oh.
That's, I seconded the motion.
Okay.
Not, not an alley.
The original meeting, but yeah.
Okay, so we've had several councils supporting this action. Do we have any sensible suggestions for our way forward? Because we can't proceed unless we have this speed limit assessment, which needs funding. Councillor White?
I understand the point of the motion, but I'm not quite sure what we'd actually get if we vote on this motion tonight, because it's been answered by the helpful note from the town clerk. Also, I think it's a bit contradictory, because previously it said 21 hour zones, where this is also talking about a 21 hour limit for all of Buckingham, which wasn't in previous motions. So I'm just a little bit perplexed as to what outcome we're expecting from this motion beyond what the town clerk has already provided in the papers. And then there's maybe something else to come back to at a later point following that paper from the clerk.
Thank you. Councillor Stockbury?
Yeah, I mean, this is, thank you for the potted history of it. This is probably one of the most elongated disappointing engagements we've had with the community board. The report states that we were delayed waiting for transport butts to deliberate on the report. I think councillor White makes a good point about what he said amended to say feasibility study in the areas which should be in line with the first motion. I hope that would be accepted. But I do think that with the decision on the September meeting, which rather shoehorned any possibility of progressiveness, we have right to be slightly concerned because the actual decision never ever got to the point where it came, and one can correct me if I'm wrong, it never actually got to the point because of determination where the actual Buckinghamshire councillors had a chance to either support it or not support it, because it was stuck in what they call, and the wording was determination and whatever terminology. So we got, as Buckinghamshire councillors, we never even got to vote on this in either for it or against it. And I'm presumed with the, in some form or fashion, Buckinghamshire councillors would have wanted to support something. So I think that's regrettable. How we go forward, because we've missed the opportunity because of the way the decisions have come, and I did push for the response on this, which town clerks put in, because I felt it was right that we knew is we've lost the opportunity of precepting this year for this amount of money if we'd wanted to precept for it, which is a whole discussion which we can't have because the decision that we've done. So I think what we really need to do is, is carry on the discussions about this. We do need to discuss, I think separately, whether, because the cost will go up, if we go back to them for a feasibility study.
What's your two minutes councillor Stockbury?
Three minutes. I think it's three minutes. So thank you, I'll carry on talking. Your enthusiasm stopped me talking and interrupting me. I applaud you for that. Anyway, we need to go back, as I was saying, to do a whole discussion about whether we precept this, which is something that I think I would recommend that we take the resources committee to discuss the costs of this and how if we precept for it in a future year, how we would fund that against the costs of everything else. Because we can't just tonight recommend that we fund it without doing it properly. And that's what I was trying to get to.
And councillor Otis Bogan?
Yes, thank you, thank you, madam. I have read the town clerk's report. If I could get some guidance here, are we discussing recommendations or discussing councillor Willis's motion? I think they're talking about two different things. And his recommendation talks about either like councillor Stockbury was saying, preset or we postpone whilst councillor Willis's motion is for more information. So I'm not sure what the topic is.
Thank you, that's, yeah. Any assistance on this?
My suggestion is it's an unusually worded motion, I guess, because it's, I'm proposing to discuss something which, I guess, from around the table, everybody, nobody's unhappy with having a discussion on this subject. So in a way, I think everybody's supportive of councillor Willis's proposal that we discuss and bring some clarity to the issue. So if, so it might be worth just taking a vote on that for the sake of the minute to be clear that we can discuss it and then move forward to actually discussing what really matters in terms of what we do next.
So, yeah, so those who are in principle in favour of 20 mile an hour speed limits, although the point was this is own or, I'm not there.
So my suggestion was to vote initially on just to agree that we do accept the motion as far as we do want to discuss the subject.
Right.
So just to be clear that we, I'm trying to find a way of moving on to having the actual discussion, which is what we all want to do, isn't it?
Councillor, why?
I've voted, this is not the first time there's been a poorly worded motion. I'm not actually sure what we're voting on. And there's no disrespect to you, because you want to have a discussion, I get that. But actually, the whole point of the motion is to come to a conclusion. So we know what we're resolving. And technically, the resolution is asking for information, which the clerk has provided. So, but the problem is the way the motion is worded is it's asking for other things beyond what previous motions have asked for. And I don't think anyone has ever said the whole of Buckinghamshire will be 20 miles an hour, which could be taken from this motion.
I kept my issue with that. Councillor Harvey?
Can I propose amendment to the motion? And thinking of a more councillor subject, a few minutes ago. First, yes, that we refer to back to the resources committee with a view to precepting for an investigation into the feasibility of 20 mile per hour zones within the town. So that we are able to either advance on that or not, and you'll have the resources committee decide so. But I was, I'm pretty sure saying, yes, agreed, got this, delete or insert, we refer this to resources committee.
Now, councillor Willis, do you?
Yeah, I think the initial aim of this motion was to But I think the thrust of the motion was to establish zones within Buckingham town itself, not class the whole of Buckingham as 20 mile an hour speed limit, because, you know, as zone, that'd be, you know, frankly, in some stages, absolutely ridiculous. But I think that there are specific zones in Buckingham which do warrant a 20 mile an hour speed limit, particularly around the Western Avenue, Western Avenue Road, which is quite busy around.
You can't get more than 20 miles an hour. You can't go any faster.
Well, no, I've seen people, I've seen people do more than that. I have seen more, but people do more than that. And that's been around certain events, like, you know, they'll use it as a rat run. People will use it as a rat run to get through one side of Buckingham to the other. Definitely around areas of Maitland-Morton, although we don't.
No, we can't do that.
That's, that's going to be on my reading now, so.
Councillor Ralph?
I'd like to second John's motion and get it referred to the resources committee, because I think that's the appropriate thing to do. And then perhaps that will draw it to a close for this, for this evening.
Okay, so we've got that amendment proposed and seconded. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. I agree with councillor, councillor Harvey's amendment. But I would like that to, I hope that we come back to full council, some states where to agree. And the second point is, I honestly think this 20 mile zones and things, it's like a pie in the sky. Unless you can enforce it, unless you can enforce it, it's a pointless exercise. I mean, we can't even get 30 mile, people doing 30 miles on the Stratford Road unless there's a police van there. And that's, that's what the kind of enforcement you need. And I don't think we're going to get that. 20 mile zones around schools and things, yes, I totally support that. But unless you enforce it, it's not going to happen.
Thank you, councillor Stockbury.
I'll speak to the amendment.
I'm speaking to the amendment.
I'll speak to the amendment. I support the amendment, as one suggested. The, I think we need to bring it back to the resources committee, but I do think we need to carry on this information, the full, any further information is provided to resource committee around it. At that point, we need to go out for future costs, because the cost would have gone up. And, and then we need to, at that point, if we get a cost, then recommend it to council to be part of the precept setting process. And so it's considered against other items in the precept. Because it's a one-off standalone cost, it shouldn't be budgeted against every particular committee's budget. And, and that way, it's the proper way of doing it.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey, did you want to?
I certainly would, but.
Thank you, councillor.
Yes, I would contribute some forward to that. I know that there is an amount fixed attached to this recommendation. I would suggest that the new developments with the highway code, we let that come through first. I know that's a, that's a key factor that can affect people's resources in the world. I know that based on the motion, we won't be taking this point any further. I will be abstaining from it.
Thank you.
Yes, but I would, I would rather we wait for the highway code to come through first before proceed on speed limits.
Thank you. So we've got the, you've accepted that amendment councillor Willis?
Yes, yeah.
Can we vote on the, the motion as amended?
Yeah, we need to agree to amend it first.
Yeah.
All right, those in favour of the amendment, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
And those against?
Record it though, please.
Hang on, councillor Stockbury was on the recording.
No, we voted on the amendment, now we're voting on the actual.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
We voted to agree the amendment, now we're voting on the amendment.
You're also recorded, vote now on the actual motion.
On the actual motion.
So those in favour of the amended motion, please show.
Councillors Dunsbury, Mahi, Ralph, Ryan, Harvey, Willis, Ahmed Donahue, that's eight.
And those against?
None.
Abstentions?
Councillors Gately, Otis Bogan, White and Collins.
So that motion is carried. Thank you. And then councillor Cole has, councillor Ralph?
I'd leave to bring forward the motion, item four on behalf of councillor Cole.
And I'll, and I'll second it.
And if necessary, standing orders, if I was able to speak to his motion, it would be carried under my name.
Thank you. Those in favour of suspending?
We don't think, we changed the standing order.
So that people can speak on Zoom. Thank you. So shall I just read out the motion? Or would you like to read out the motion?
So I can, or councillor Cole can read the motion? No, I would have thought, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Before I read out the motion, I'm just going to say, you will all hopefully have read my report on the section, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm sorry. You'll see my report on the 30 mile an hour speed limit request in Tindrit Road and the meeting we held, representatives of Buckinghamshire Council, Buckingham Town Council and staff members from both authorities, plus Mr Neil Biggs, who is a Thames Valley Police civilian traffic management officer. He originally said that he didn't believe that this warranted a 30 mile an hour limit, and he wasn't clear if it would warrant a 40 mile an hour limit either. That would require further investigation. He originally, in his report, made four reasons why there shouldn't be a speed limit of that, of 30 miles an hour down Twinget Road. Following the meeting, I made notes and I, we provided 10 reasons why there should be a speed limit there. I also drew attention in that report to the fact his pictures were very skewed. They only pointed down the hill where there's vegetation. They didn't show any buildings at all. As you can see in my report, the buildings are there. So I propose that Buckingham Town Council called for a 30 mile an hour speed limit over the whole length of Tindrit Road, from the A41 down into the town for the safety of residents and most particularly for children. And when we put that forward to the relevant authorities, if we include my report, so they can see exactly our reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cole. And we've got a second, thank you, councillor White?
Well, I completely agree with the motion, but it does feel a bit superfluous, because I think the council has already made its position clear to Buckinghamshire Council about this. So I'd say, suggest we go to the vote and support this, so we can get cracking with rest of the business.
Thank you, yeah. Councillor Stockbury?
I think that's, it's only right that councillor Cole brought this. Having attended the site meeting with those councillors who are not working and who were able to attend, I think it's, irrespective of what the view may be of Buckinghamshire councils based upon the advice they've received, I think it's a reasonable aspiration for this council to make a statement that we support the 30 mile an hour limit and reinforce that statement. I know we wrote them before, we haven't actually done it in a formal motion sense, it's that we've done it in a committee thing. So I think the motion adds additional weight to its discussion, because it's a vote in a council to say that we support it. So it does add additional weight. And before we move to the vote, I think it's important that the rest of those views.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey?
Just to say, I've done a little bit of digging using pretty much information queries. And I discovered that the police were involved in the decisions a few years back, bringing 30 mile speed limits on Thames Stratford Road, North Road and so on. Apparently, this process was that there was, there were county and district councils involved in that and a representative of the police. And they all took a democratic decision to bring in a 30 mile speed limit. The TDP had the option, but made no sort of representation. So they were party to bringing in 30 mile speed limits on the roads that we definitely cited. I've also done a little bit more reading as well in Oxfordshire, which also, of course, is released by Thames Valley. And my impression is, it's only an impression, and I would have to do a lot more research to prove this, but my impression is from looking at some random submissions the police have made, is that they generally resist any reduction in speed on roads that they feel resource wise that they cannot police. It seems to be a policy decision that they have made. So rather than look at safety per se, or look at the particular local conditions, they generally object anyway. So to be honest, I wouldn't give this view one of this much credibility.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Harvey. Councillor Collins, now we'll move to a vote.
I was just going to say, I agree totally with the motion and say that I thought the police would support it, because pre-COVID they were in the fishers' field with their speed cameras at least four times a year. And they always pulled in at least 12 to 18 people at a time speeding. Because they used to pull it in opposite hand, so I trained them.
Thank you. So can we vote on this case? Those in favour of the proposal, please show.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. And thank you councillor Cole for pulling that to us. And then item five, which is also from councillor Cole. I'm happy to propose this as councillor Cole is able to. And I also, we appreciate the amendment that councillor White sent him earlier. And I did ask councillor Cole, and he's happy to accept that amendment, which is helpful. Thank you, councillor.
I'm going to have to second the original motion before we can discuss the amendment. So I'll second. But as, I'll second the original proposal. That means then we can discuss the amendment.
Okay, so, well, I've got to speak as councillor Cole can't. I'll propose it. Councillor Stockbury is seconding. Councillor Cole?
Yeah, if I may speak on my motion, my part, thank you, madam. You will all hopefully have read my report on section 106 health provisions for housing developments in Buckingham. I don't intend to go through it, but I would draw your attention to the fact that since the last 10 years, there's been no contribution towards health from developers, even though new housing has increased and is increasing. Perspectives one have practiced patients by almost 5,000 once OZI went Morton Road Phase Three had been built. That's an increase of 32%. The closest we came to it was at Lace Hill, where the developer was to contribute £770,000 towards the new health centre for relocation costs and rent subsidies. That was lost when ABDC failed to determine the application. The inspector at the consequent appeal did not renew that condition as development health authority no longer existed. In January, Buckingham Town Council and Winslow Town Council were told that the BMK ALC Towns and Parishes Forum, in answer to our written questions about lack of any community infrastructure levy contributions in North Bucks, that currently SIL applies early in South Bucks and that section 106 agreements would remain in the north until at least the enacting of the current planning white paper. Even then, SIL and section 106 are placed by a national infrastructure levy. This was confirmed to me by Buckinghamshire Council Planning Director Steve Bambrick in early February, that this was indeed the case. In putting tonight's motion, I'm seeking to redress this inequity. I believe it's scandalous that while schools, transport services, recreation and leisure all benefit from developer contributions, health in North Buckinghamshire does not. I learned an hour ago that councillor Warren White has proposed an amendment to clarify some of those section 106 and SIL issues for which I'm indebted to him, and I'm happy to accept his amendment.
Well, second, thank you. Could you, councillor White, would you like to explain your amendment? Not all councillors might have.
Indeed, indeed. So as Mark has said, there are definitely issues with the way that health provision in Buckinghamshire, not just North Bucks, but Buckinghamshire as a whole, gets support through new development. And one of the issues is not just Buckinghamshire Healthcare Trust, which is our hospital trust, but it's primarily our Buckinghamshire CCG, which controls primary care. But also, I don't want to forget about mental health, which never appears in terms of capacity building within a growing county, and particularly North Bucks. So the first part of the motion amendment is to make sure that all three healthcare bodies are held to account, because it's not the council that's responsible for providing evidence for healthcare. The statutory responsibility is with Buckinghamshire Healthcare System, primarily Buck CCG. And when I was the cabinet member for planning, I had a very interesting meeting with the healthcare systems and found out that there is no estate strategy for Buckinghamshire. Now, without a state strategy, that means they don't have the evidence to give Buckinghamshire Council to put a section 106 or a SIL application in for healthcare provision. Now, that in itself is unacceptable, and that's still an outstanding issue for, as far as I'm concerned, with Buck CCG. And this amendment motion would hopefully help draw that out. Because if you look on Oxfordshire CCG website, they do have a state strategy. But Buckinghamshire doesn't. And the other important point to note is that without that evidence, the council cannot, cannot put in a section 106 or even undertake a SIL calculation to put forward any expansion of healthcare facilities. So in my view, and certainly the view that was passed to me when I was in that role, is that the healthcare system has to provide the evidence. And what's also disconcerting to me is that without that evidence, Buck CCG is unable to bid to NHS England for any capital funding, which of course our other neighbouring authorities are able to do. So Milton Keynes has had two new healthcare facilities in the eastern flank and western flank aren't funded by NHS England capital funding, not just developer contributions. So hence why I think this needs to be broadened out. It's not just the developers who are responsible for healthcare capacity. It is also the wider NHS system and central government. So I hope that with the way I've amended it, and I do appreciate councillor Cole for accepting this amendment, is to try to get very specific actions for this council to help to get them to the core issues and to get the healthcare system to start realising they have an important job to not only deal with the two decades worth of population growth, but also the known growth coming.
Sorry.
Give it me to it.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. We will need you to read out the amended motion, I think, before we vote on it. Councillor Stockbury?
I don't know whether you saw the response to the written question at Cabinet, which was, unfortunately didn't make the agenda. I think the town clerk circulated it, which actually, the response that I got at Cabinet rather mirrors what councillor White has actually said to you in detail. What is disappointing about it is there does seem to be, as he quite rightly says, no strategy. There seems to be no interaction. And we, as councillor Mark Cole says, we now know through correspondence from planning officers that through inactions elsewhere, we've lost the money in law for the healthcare facility in Buckingham, which was the only money we'd actually in a paid way achieved. I think he's right to actually go through the process, but it also said, the cabinet member said, or acting, because the cabinet member was off at the time, said that they were working on a strategy with the healthcare providers. Where councillor White is right, what Buckinghamshire can't do is actually write the healthcare strategy for the healthcare providers. And what he is right is they've had no strategy for about 10 years. And, and what he is right about is that they've lost out on huge amounts of money, which, as he quite rightly said, you only got to look at Northamptonshire, you've only got to look at Oxfordshire, of where they've been successful. So this is really something that I think crosses across lots of portfolios on Buckinghamshire council to sort out. And I'm sure will be a factor in the Health and Script Committee going forward. But I do think that we do need to send a strong signal that concerns. I think we are open door in Buckinghamshire council, because as councillor White rightly says, it's not just a Buckinghamshire thing. The only thing is, above that, of course, the Altravail Plan didn't introduce SIL. And I think, Warren, or correct me if I'm wrong, SIL does have special measures within it to accrue money where going through the section 106 route, it has to go through a procedure. That's what they said at council to me in the written response. So if they're wrong, Warren, I'm going back. So if they're wrong, I'll go back and correct them. But but that's what their answer said, which is in the public domain now, and it should have been circulated to you. Unfortunately, it didn't make the agenda. But we do need to sort this out.
I think it was subsequent.
Was it?
Yeah. Thank you. Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, I fully accept what Mark said and also the amendment from Warren. I think all good points in the right direction. The only thing I would suggest is that an amendment to now amended version, I would propose that we insert somewhere, either as a footnote or somewhere in the text, all successor bodies. It's because the NHS is now just blooming well changed again. And now getting the Buckinghamshire, Oxfordshire and all Buck shares ICS or ICP or whatever they call it in the next five minutes, which stands for the Integrated Care System, Integrated Care partnership. And when that is finally brought in, CCG will then be phased out. So we have to find a way. So we have to find a way of ensuring that our motion, although it's probably not legal, we like section 106, ensuring our motion remains current.
Thank you.
That's what I'm suggesting. Yeah. And although I feel a bit bad about, I'm very worried about the national infrastructure levy being called out because that's ruled out as the deal.
Thank you. Councillor Mordu and then.
Of course, with Lace Hill, there was a 106 provision and that was allocating the land for the new medical centre. And that was reserved purely for a medical centre. The money that was authored part 106 was to assist with the moving of Swan Practice to the new medical centre. If we take those CCGs, they've never been responsible for anything but commissioning services. And as one of the problems with the system, the, if a developer enters into a 106 agreement with the council. That money has to be spent locally with the developer's permission. You cannot just send it to another body, otherwise you'll lose it. So if you enter into 106 agreement and you decide it's not going to be used in Buckingham. But it's going to be used somewhere else, that can be done only with the developer's permission. At a moment, the NHS estates owns the buildings and the land. So you've got to come to a different sort of arrangement. The CCGs are in the process of disappearing, as councillor Harvey said into Bob's. The primary care network is completely different to the actual ownership of the buildings. Although it could be synonymous, the Swan Practice is a primary care trust in its own entity. And the other one up this here is the North Bucks Primary Care Network. So you're going to be making a resolution, which you can do, to actually go over body, which is eventually going to disappear anyway.
Thank you.
So bear that in mind.
Thank you. Councillor Cole and then maybe councillor White can read out the amended proposal. Did you want to come back on anything councillor Cole? No. Okay, thank you. Councillor White, can you read out the?
Can I just come back to a couple of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. So councillor Mordu is right to a certain extent about the responsibility of actual buildings. But actually, the CCG or successor bodies has a statutory duty to make sure.
Thank you.
It's a bit like school-based planning. There is a duty to plan for the healthcare's capacity of the county. And the CCG has not done that. They failed in Princess Risberg, they failed in Aylesbury, they failed in South Bucks. It is county wide. So that's why I'm really keen that we don't make this a north-south argument. It is county wide. But the, as far as I'm aware, the National NHS England requirements for local NHS bodies to have an estate strategy does not go away. They will just have to find the relevant body for it to sit with. So it might be Bob, it might be ICP, it might be whoever. So I'm very happy to add the word successor bodies and I'll mention that in my amendment. So. Oh, the other thing I just wanted to clarify was that the, the reason why the Ozea Way. Application failed to get any healthcare funding. Is that it was Buck's Healthcare Trust, i.e. the hospital trust, that put in a bid, which wasn't compliant with the law. They had this argument in Aylesbury as well. They were told it wasn't compliant. So. So, well, the hospital has been getting shed loads of money, millions and millions of pounds from the government direct for expansion and still manuel. So it seemed a bit odd, but they also wanted to double dip on developer contributions. The body that was silenced in all these conversations over the years is the CCG. They have not been pushing bids in to build the capacity of the primary care network. And that's the issue primarily. But anyway, so I hope I've encapsulated all that in the amendment.
Thank you.
So the amendment is, and I'll just say, read it straight through to make it simple. The town council asks Buckinghamshire Council and the local NHS system, Buckinghamshire CCG, community. Oh, forgotten where it stands for now. CCG, Buckinghamshire Healthcare Trust and Oxford Health NHS Foundation. Foundation Trust for Mental Health Services or their successor bodies. To provide assurances that for any future developments in the town. That the CCG, BHT and OH will ensure that they provide Buckinghamshire Council with the correct evidence and justification. For the inclusion of suitable health contributions from section 106 agreements to ensure that North Bucks has adequate primary and community. Care facilities required by a growing population. The council also asks Buckinghamshire CCG to expedite its long overdue health estate strategy. So that it has the appropriate evidence to bid for additional NHS England capital funding. To support a fast growing area such as Buckingham, which is seen as population grows significantly in the last two decades. Without any suitable investment in healthcare capacity in that time.
Thank you. I think we proceed to the vote.
I want to second it to speak to the amendment. Can I ask that when we agree this, it's not contradicting anything that's been said. That we send a copy of this to the Health and Scrutiny Committee. Because I think it's something that they need to be aware of and they have a responsibility for health in Buckinghamshire. And I'm sure the chairman would be quite respective of that. And just to say a note of what we've said, I think that's a proper thing to do. As there will be questions to be asked of the appropriate people at that committee of why they haven't done what councillor White has actually said.
You've already seconded it. We.
Just to clarify, I would hope that by the words Buckinghamshire Council, that includes all the relevant.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
It includes the cabinet member of the relevant committees.
Thank you.
So we now need to vote on that proposal as amended twice. Okay? Those in favour of that proposal please show. Thank you very much. Very important issue that we've made progress with today. Thank you.
Mark's saying he's going up to the top.
Thank you. Item six is councillor's allowances. We all declare an interest in that.
If I may.
Yes, sure.
So the council allowances are set in line with those recommended by the remuneration panel or the remuneration panel. Sets allowances as a recommended proportion of what Buckinghamshire councillors are set. And what could be in this report is the updated figure based on what Buckinghamshire councillors have been allocated as an awarded amount this year. Just to highlight that if you do agree that amount, the forms you've all filled in are £10 wrong because this will grant you another £10. So we'll send a memo just to confirm that you're happy to receive the additional £10. So if you want the additional £10, you will need to return that to us this week.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey, then councillor Stutford.
So just to clarify, this, I wasn't sure what the original, what the current figure was, is £10 more. I think it's £10 more than what it is a fraction of the same. What is that?
4.5%.
It comes out as £10 more than what was sent around for some reason.
Can I just clarify? Should that say 22 to 23 or is 21 to 22?
This is 21 to 22. So this is, so we always say allowances at the end of the financial year. So we make money before you.
Wonder about that. Councillor Stutford.
It would be most unusual to not support what this is. Out of work that town councillors do, an extra £10 a year seems hardly appropriate amount of money if you add up the hours that people put in. But we do it because we want to do the right things. I hope we will agree this. Though we must be minded to the fact that it is £10 additional. But if we start not going in line with Buckinghamshire Council and local government things, once we break that link. We then have the problem that at some point we have to return to parity. So I suppose we agree.
Councillor Try.
Thank you. Paragraph 2.2, point of clarification, should not it say subsistence rates for elected town parish councillors?
No, no subsistence rates. So I believe all councillors are eligible for expenses.
Correct.
Correct.
But not eligible for the allowance payment.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to vote on this then? Those in favour, please show. unanimous. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask for you, chairman, can we just send an email saying yes, rather than fill in the form again? Because I'll have to come down and get another form because it doesn't print.
I'll find the simplest possible way.
Exactly, because I don't really want to have to fill another form in again.
Thank you very much.
Could you not do it by a show of hands?
Can we, can we move to item seven, pay settlement? Again, we've got a written report from the car. Councillor Harvey.
I propose we accept the record.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Those in favour?
Yep.
I think that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Now, item eight, we've got the town centre improvement proposal, which is again from the town clerk. That's quite a substantial document and a very important issue. Councillor White.
I kind of had an interest in this because I was chairman of the community board when I was trying to put this together. One of the reasons why I'm no longer the chairman of the community board is I saw the straight delay in this coming forward. This is at least 12 months late. But I hope the town council is supportive of it.
Thank you.
Because it's one of the few chances we've got to try to re-envision some of our elements of the town centre in a post-COVID situation.
Thank you.
Happy to support that in the sense that if we don't actually look at this and we don't actually do the analysis, how on earth are we going to? Get proportions and money to Buckingham compared to what councillor White's probably rightly saying, that money's been allocated to other places. And, and he's been attempting to get similar money allocated. We can discuss the detail at a later stage, but the principle is what we're voting for on now. The detail is not to get lost in now and vote for this as it is because it does allow us to have that discussion about the detail. Which the states or stakeholders are going to be involved in. And only thing is, I would have put stakeholders in a slightly different order, but apart from that, I think it's, I'd happen to second it and suppose we move to the vote.
Thank you. Councillor Try.
I agree with the motion. Are we allowed to impose a budget on next year's council?
What council are you talking about?
Next year.
For us all.
Right. We've got to make up £28,000.
No, 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 this is not a financial permit from us at all. This is just agreeing for Buckinghamshire Council to commit £50,000 of their money. And that includes committing £28,000 of their money into their next year budget that haven't yet set, but that's their problem, not ours.
Not for us to answer that question, it's for them.
So are we happy to move to the vote then? Those in favour, please show.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. And now it's chairs announcements. Other than to thank you for your attendance, thank you for those on Zoom. Sorry if you got overlooked at the beginning. And I do wish a speedy recovery to those who are unwell. Oh yes, the signs, this is really good news. When I drove back into Buckingham on Saturday, I saw the new signs gone up, which include our winter of 1912. So thanks to everyone involved to make that happen. So that's really, really good news. And the time for our civic visit, which is the weekend after next. So I hope that you're fully engaged with that weekend. We'll be looking forward to welcoming our partners from Germany and France. Thank you very much, everybody. And our next meeting, all councils 28th of March and interim council on the 9th of May. Thank you, everybody.